Okay, you're ready.
All right. Well, welcome everybody to the special meeting on April seventeenth. I didn't wanna miss a whole meeting, a whole month without a meeting, so. I'm glad everybody can make it this, this week. It seemed like everybody just had an issue last week. So glad we can get together. I can't see who's there, but I guess when we. Call the order and the seating of the members, we'll find out. So Sherri, do you want to do a roll call?
Yeah, I don't understand why you don't see us. Abby set this up today, so anyway. Catherine Zemeckis here, Nick Webb.
Here.
Bert Schmitz is not here. Larry's not here. Mark Giaccona.
Here.
Joan Yulati.
Here.
Mary Jo Phelps. Here. Okay.
Excellent. Okay, so we have quorum. Most importantly, we got a couple of guys that. Have been involved in the land acquisition piece, so that'll be great. So the next order of business is to review the March meeting notes. So. I need a motion from either, is there any debate on the, the meeting notes from last month?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
We're getting much better at this. We're moving through this at a very fast rate. All right. So all in favor of approving the minutes?
I'd ask for discussion.
Oh, I, okay, any discussion before we do a vote?
No.
No? Okay, all in favor?
I.
All opposed? Okay. So the, uh, meaning the minutes have been approved from last month. That's great. Okay. Uh, I have no information on pollinator pathway. Um, but I will start work on that. I've, I've reached out to Sherri to see if she'd be willing, Ernst who would be willing to do it in the library again, and they are. So now I just have to get a date at the library. You got half air of March.
You got to be a cheat out here.
I mean, they had concerns that everybody had already seen the information before. But I always think it draws a good audience and there's a lot of information and I always pick up something. Every time we do it, so I think I can convince them to go ahead and do it. I will reach out to Sarah. And I'll get a, a date on the calendar for that.
Awesome.
MJ, anything on residential food compost?
That's all on me, of course, because I. It was my suggestion that we do it this Saturday, but then I didn't. Find out who was available, so can we? Try to make it the following weekend?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that would be the twenty-seventh, I guess, if this Saturday's the twentieth?
Yep.
Twenty-seventh. So.
Transfer station.
What's that?
Where is that going to make the library?
At the transfer station. But I, I like Nick's suggestion that really it's the first four hours.
Yeah.
So we'll be there from eight to noon.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know. That's when the most people are there. Um, I have been noticing more and more. That the bins being way more filled than previously, so.
Yep.
And then Nick, I was just talking to them about, um. There was a front page article in Monday's Hartford Current, I mean, top of the, top of the fold and everything. Um. The state legislature is considering making food scrap recycling mandatory. They're not gonna fund it if they do make it mandatory, but. They're considering making it mandatory. Um, so. It's in the news.
Yeah. So I talked to the guys at the dump on two Saturdays ago. And I just asked them for their impressions of how it was going. And they said, in general, it was fine. It wasn't like. Moving the dial in terms of the weight of trash coming into the, uh. Center, but they hadn't, you know, it wasn't that hard to do. Which is a step in the right direction because they hated it at first. Um, I asked them if they had noticed whether or not the. Compost piles. Were actually shrinking faster because apparently when you put in food waste compost into the compost pile. They will compost faster. And they both said that it was not enough compost yet to notice the difference. But they think it might just be slightly better.
Okay. Okay, well, keep it to it, right? The, the better that will be. I, I noticed when I put mine in, it kind of bummed me out. Somebody had put. Why you wouldn't use your bananas even though they're not. You know. They're overripe. I still use those. Right, exactly, but each banana had a sticker still on it.
You know what? That's the least of our worries.
I, I, I agree, but. It's pretty clear on the instructions.
Yeah.
Says no bags, doesn't say no stickers.
What's that? But it does say no stickers.
It also says no staples in the tea bags.
Right.
Yeah, but. Uh, too.
Staples in it, you can't, I mean, it's, it's metal, it's rust, it's weight, it's nothing, there's nothing. People are not gonna tear apart their tea bag.
I guess, well, to put them in.
I've been happily noticing. I've been happily noticing mine don't have stickers.
That's fine, but most people do, and you're not gonna see it in the kitchen tearing our sea bags, so.
I made. Bags do not have the tech.
Well, there you go.
So their big concern was during the summer when it begins to really smell bad. That it attracts bears. I said, it would shock me if there were, there's a bear in the area. That got attracted to this.
There's a bear that lives over there.
Yeah, there is a bear there. We saw him.
Yeah.
A couple of bears, my old young C L was. Yeah, walking through.
Really?
No, I got a close to the home over there somewhere. Yeah.
Anyway, so. They said that if that happened, it would be very concerning to them and they might have to cancel the whole food waste thing. They've been trying to cancel the food waste thing since it started, so.
Yeah.
What's the problem with the bear?
Oh, the bear lives over there, so. It smells the compost, it'll probably go for it, I don't, I mean, it's already over there anyway.
Yeah.
The bear already is there. So.
That's what I'm saying, like, does that really increase the risk of bear or something? I don't get it.
No, I, also probably territorial, I don't think, you know, there's one there, I think you're gonna get it ground, but I'm not sure, I don't know that.
They're like giant raccoons, basically.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on food waste, MJ?
No.
Okay, well, actually, let's think about how we actually accomplish this. Um, if you want, I will reach out to Todd. Let him know that we're gonna, thinking about doing this. Ask him if he has any issues. Um. And then you have to send out a, you know, who's gonna volunteer to be there. And you should definitely send that out to the sustainability committee as well, because they were there last time.
Right, I was gonna send to, is there anybody on sustainability besides Brett and Sue?
No, not that I know. I think there actually is. But I don't know who they are. Just send it to Sue.
Yeah. So, yes, I will, I will.
I will send an email to Todd as soon as I get off this meeting.
Yes.
Um. Okay, moving on, next, uh. Uh, Japanese knotweed. Um, it's time to send out our informative, uh, one pager again, Catherine. So I will send it to you and I will post it on, um, next door.
Okay.
Cool. And then the open space set aside commit, subcommittee. Um. That's on hold until we finish with the land acquisition, so I'll move past that, so we get into old business. Um, the library, I have not checked out the public use of the infrared camera. But I will do so. I've been very busy. Um. And that leads us to the bicycle rank racks in downtown Clinton. Has anybody found out anything in terms of what the, um. Economic Development Committee has found out?
Wasn't that part of the revitalization, the new update? I don't know.
I think you're right, Catherine. I think there is part of that.
Maybe.
Um, let me do some research. Everybody else can do some research.
Yeah, I, I. It's easy to check, right?
You would think. Unfortunately, our, my friend is no longer on the Economic Development Committee, so. My access to what they're up to is no longer valid. But I will reach out to them. Um, I think it'd be really nice to get a couple bicycle, bicycle racks down there. Um. Any other comments before we go on to the? Fortieth Annual Land Conservation Conference. Did anybody go to that? I know somebody was talking about it.
Too, but I, um. I had a conflict. My husband and I had a. Tickets to a play. I didn't. I didn't know. Probably somebody, people from the Land Conservation Trust probably went, I'm assuming.
You would assume.
Right.
All right. Well, I think we can skip right over that. Um, which moves us into new business. So there, when is Earth Day?
Monday.
This Monday?
Yeah, twenty-second.
Twenty-second, yeah.
Wow.
Funny how that.
That prepped up on us. Um. Would anybody be interested in doing a Earth Day cleanup next weekend?
You mean this? You mean this weekend?
Oh, sorry, this weekend.
I'm working.
I can't do it because I'm, I'm still in quarantine. Actually, it's outside. I think I probably could. But somebody else would have to sort of organize it, because I don't think I could be the person running.
I can make it.
I'm working this weekend.
And so is this around, is that, that area, where, where are you talking about doing the cleanup?
The last time we did it, we did it in downtown Clinton. And we just walked down the main street. All the way from like the CVS and Chips. All the way down to the town hall.
I mean, I can do that, but remember how many people that, that gentleman kind of organized, um. Different groups of people to go to different spots. Again. I'm happy to go, I, I thought you were talking maybe about the area where the. Pollinator garden is on the bank of the Indian River, because we have talked about cleaning up that area before.
Yeah.
I'd be happy.
So I think the beautification committee is gonna handle that. Um, but they will send out an invite when.
Even that parking lot, that's so yucky. I don't know.
Yeah, um. All right, let me, uh, let me reach out to the beautification and sustainability committees. And see if we're interested in doing that. If so, I'll put an invite out for Saturday morning and. If people can come, that would be great.
Okay, where's it gonna be?
It'd be in downtown in the parking lot behind Coffee Break.
Oh, you do in the pollinator gardens, okay.
Well, it would be more than the pollinator garden, it would be the downtown area.
Right, where are you gonna meet?
In the parking lot behind, uh, Coffee Break.
Right. At what time? It depends on how many people.
You're at ten.
Ten?
Ten. If, if I get. Some resources from beautification and sustainability, I'll send out a meeting invite to everybody. Okay?
Okay, so meeting invite is gonna go out?
Yeah. If I can get people there. I don't want to do it just three of us here.
Right.
Okay. Um. Joan, do you want to talk, I, I. I don't know if there's anything to talk about in terms of coastal resiliency. Uh, Abby was gonna talk to us about what was going on in the commission. But I don't think she's in today.
They sent out.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry.
I was in contact with, uh, Juliana Barrett at UConn, the one that gave that talk that I was supposed to give everybody the PowerPoint for. And she emailed it to me in a couple different ways, but unless you have a UConn net ID, you cannot open the file. So she tried to compress it and sent it as a PDF and you still makes you sign in with a UConn ID. So I called her again. I've been in contact with her a couple times over the past month. And, um, she said she would try to send it again. Which she did and it didn't work, so I sent the last copy to Sherri just now. And, um. I asked her on the phone, I left a message for her, can she please send us a hard copy if nobody can open it? You know. So that's where it is right now. She has not responded to the last message yet. So.
Okay, well, thanks for, uh, chasing that down.
Absolutely, I'll get it, I'll get somehow, because I think I was saying before that the, um, the library might have a UConn ID, right? Because I thought I remembered when I was. Uh, became a member of the library that they have UConn articles that we can access.
Okay, um. Let me find it. I've got a friend that's the, works at the library.
Okay.
Okay. Um, alternatively. Um. I was talking to Kate Radick, who is on the commission. And she would be interested in sort of combining resources on some of the action items that go on with the. Resiliency Commission. Um, and she suggested that Abby give a brief on it the next time she's at our meeting. So I think we'll do that. Um, Sherri, would it make sense to sort of put that in? As a workshop?
Okay. You workshop. Still can't see me? Mm-hmm, okay.
Um. And then look, once we sort of understand where they are in their process, we can, uh. Um, we can figure out how we can help in terms of what they do. I mean, what Kate was saying is that they need a whole of government approach, a whole of. Really, the whole town to embrace what we're doing in coastal resiliency. It's gonna be a big deal over the next ten years.
Absolutely.
And so, um, they're gonna need everybody on board. If anybody has seen, uh, Port Lobster landing, they've, uh, they've been like flooded out for the last, uh, month. Like every other day. Uh, they were supposed to open two weeks ago and they still have not yet opened because they keep getting flooded out, so. Um.
Did it get the email from Abby about the, the, the first part of the plan? Her poster was, because she was asking for comments.
Yes. Did everybody get that, by the way?
I haven't seen it. I don't know, but she sent it a few days ago, plan, the, uh, part one of the plan, review, sending your comments, here is it.
I will, I will find it, Catherine, and I'll send it out to everybody.
Okay.
I thought everybody got it, but maybe not.
Well, yeah, it's a draft, the Resiliency Plan, Section One. Four shore coastal resiliency plans.
Okay, so I'll, I'll get that out to everybody.
Yeah.
Um, just, and then next time Abby's here, we'll, uh, have her just sort of run down what they're up to. Sound good? Um. Sherri. As I look at the agenda, it says that next month's meeting is virtual only.
Yes, yeah, um, I believe it's a budget referendum.
Ah, okay.
I think. Or it's a budget hearing. It's something to do with that.
All right, good enough. Does anybody have a problem doing just virtual? No? No.
Not in there?
Are there any additions that anybody wants to add to the meeting? For next month?
Because we're on the community, that's why we got it. I should send it out to the guys in the lodge, I should do.
Let's see.
I don't care. So, do we have any add to the meeting?
Uh, no.
Catherine, Joan, anything to add to next month's meeting?
Next month's?
Um, what about the seeds that, um, you had wanted us to plant?
Oh. It's too late for that, I'm afraid, Joan.
Oh, is it? I was away, sorry, I, I must have missed the last.
No, 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 you didn't, you didn't, we didn't, uh, follow through on that, but. Thank you for bringing that up. I'll show, when, uh, when I pull the tops off my, uh, containers, I'll show you what it looks like.
Okay.
And I'll have some, uh, pollinator plants that if anybody wants, I can, uh. Send over to you.
Great.
That are up and growing. I've got a lot of, uh, Joe Pie weed and combed flower. So. Ooh. Hopefully, knock wood, make sure it grows. But yeah, we, uh. So what we do is we take all the seeds. We plant them in kitty litter bins. Uh. And then. You know, they're covered, it becomes almost like a terrarium. And then after three months, four months, they, uh, they grow into plants. It's actually pretty cool. Oh, is that?
I have to stick, Leo, you just walked in.
Hello? Oh, hey. How are you, Mike?
Good, yourself?
Good, good. Okay, so this is, uh, unless anybody has anything else for the next regular meeting, this is actually the time. We turn to, um. The subcommittee. So.
Oh, Mike Hood is just coming in, yeah.
Okay, so then we have a nice quorum. The only person we're missing is Larry.
Perfect timing. Mike, uh. You know. I'm back, yeah, you're back, you're. I was back from Spain, it's always great. Nineties, or what? That's.
Yeah, okay.
See you.
All right, so. Um. I guess Sherri, we need to do a sort of roll call for the, uh, subcommittee?
I usually don't do that, but. We can, Mike. Here. Mike Hood.
Present.
Mark Giaccona.
Here.
And Nicholas Webb.
Here. The only one we're missing is Larry. Um, so I think at this point, it's really, I know that you guys have had some conversations with the owners. Um, so very, very curious to hear how it went. So.
Being very.
Oh, first, I, I, I'm sorry. We have to review and approve the meetings for March.
Mm-hmm.
Comments on the minutes?
Prove of the.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mike, I made the motion to approve. Mike can stick, just seconded.
Excellent. All in favor of approving the minutes? I.
I.
All opposed? All right, the meeting minutes are approved unanimously. Um. So the April meeting was canceled. So now we're on to. Subpoint C, which is the meeting with the property owner, and I guess that's. Mark, you can give us a report on that?
Sure, I'll give you the, the rundown. So it was myself, Mike Hood. And Ken from the Land Trust, I can't remember his last name. McDonald. Ken McDonald, and he was, he's the Land Trust attorney rep. And we met with, uh. Ted Harris, the, the, the guy we've spoken to the most of the three owners. Um, and. You know, short. Description is, we presented him with the number. Of one fifty-nine, which was the result of the.
You wanna be more general.
Do what?
You're on tape and you don't want to talk about it.
You made it, it just.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, we, we presented him the number. That we have for the, uh, from the. Um, appraisal reason, with the two, two different. Folks kind of vetted that number. Um. You know, he said there was, there was some offers of similar size, and then we talked about, um. The, the path forward and we, we actually helped him come up with some selling points. For why he should do it. I mean, he, he, he wants to do it with us. He wants to. Continue forward, I think, but he's still gotta convince his other two. Owners.
So you're waiting to hear from him?
Yeah, waiting to hear back. I don't know if you guys heard back from him yet.
Well, I had a question for Abby. Is she on the meeting?
No, she's not.
Cause, um, that, we had the meeting, I don't know what day that meeting was, then Abby had. Crafted an email. Which, um. I said, looks good, and Ken got back to her, said, looks good. I think Ken got back to her on, on Friday. And then she was, uh, on vacation last week. I tried emailing her, I did email her, asked her to send, send the, uh. The original email. Uh, please, just, just get it, and I, I still don't know whether. Whether that's happening yet.
Yeah, true, we're gonna send them the appraisal paperwork.
Yes, and so, so she had crafted this email, the attachments, all the appraisers, everything that we had, you know, we talked to, to, the, Ted Harris, the owner about. And so we'd send it to him, so I, I'm hoping that she did that. I have unfortunately been on a job where I have no cell service today.
I, um. I believe that she would. Watch the Land Trust to send that. But you can double check with her tomorrow.
I know. He didn't say exactly. But he did say it was Ralph Roy Simbord.
All right, we're actually meeting with you then, right?
Yeah.
Hopefully.
So it went pretty well, I would say in general. Yeah, I mean, it seemed like he was positive about it. He has a.
So it went pretty well, I would say in general, I mean, it seemed like he was positive about it, he has to talk to his brother and his aunt. Yeah, we, we ran him through too, he did not realize that if that land was turned into a land trust, that it would but it would join with so much other land and make such a big area, but he seemed to be pretty excited about that possibility. Um, so, anyway, that was part of us trying to just help him, cause he asked for us to help explain the benefit of doing this. So we were just going through that, but pretty, just a bit, yeah, it was very positive.
But have you brought up the idea of actually naming the Park Greystone Park or anything like that?
That was part of, that was part of the, um, uh, one of the points that Abby had brought up, and that was also in that email, which unfortunately, I don't know whether she still has, uh, sent it yet. So, uh.
Okay, so, uh, Sherry, do you know when Abby is back?
She came back yesterday.
Oh, she did?
Popped up with everything yet.
I, I imagine she's probably got a hundred emails, so.
Oh, I, I forgot how much she said, it was more than that. Everybody's looking for her.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. I'll call her anymore.
Well, so we'll get an answer to that, Mike, as soon as we can, as to whether, I think it does make sense for it to go out from the Land Trust, right?
Uh, you know, it could, it could come out, it could come from, uh, Abby, I mean, it's, she's got the documents, so I don't care.
Right.
Which way, it's just the whole timing of, you know, and it, it like, uh, wasn't, you know, I was hoping to get that information to the sellers ASAP, and then it's just Abby out of vacation, so what can you do?
All right, well, we'll, uh, I mean, we don't know, it hasn't gotten there, but my guess is it hasn't, so let's get Abby on the phone tomorrow. And we will, uh, go from there.
As soon as I find out something, Nick, I will, um, email you.
Okay, great.
Mark.
Yeah. Awesome, I will reach out to Abby first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Cool, all right.
You say.
Well, that's exciting, it sounds like it's moving in the right direction.
You say you.
Yeah, I think he said, yeah, you're gonna contact her, right?
I will contact Abby.
Okay.
Okay, all right, and then, so then you'll let me know?
Yep.
Okay, great.
We have to write the email, we could get together and write it, yeah, if you want, right?
If the email's been ready.
I'm sure it'll be ready, yeah, okay.
So.
But it's important, get it out with the attachments.
Yeah. Also, by the way, Ken reiterated the, the amount of time from like now when we're closing, and Ted was still positive about that timeline, so.
That was another very, uh, key, um, positive thing. So we'll see what happens.
All right, good, good. All right, I, um, for some reason, I, uh, gotta find the agenda again, I think that was all we had in the agenda for the, uh.
For the subcommittee, yeah.
For the subcommittee? So can I get a motion?
Something that Larry had mentioned was, um, trying to see if Abby was moving along with submitting the grants for the rest of the tag funding, if we talk with her tomorrow.
Okay.
Cause there's another phase to that, for the, uh, environmental analysis and the, uh.
Right. I think.
And also, I think to some extent, I've gotta go back to the town council and get them to approve additional money above and beyond the grants for this stuff.
Yeah, and I don't know, Mike, honestly, I, I'm not sure whether, I, I would think, you know, which comes first, I just think that before we apply for, uh, you know, another tag grant, we would have to have some sort of an agreement.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Sure.
So I get Larry's, you know, chomping at the bit on that, but I, I think that we've got, I think we gotta work through a progression, you know?
Yeah, I.
So explain that, Mike, just, let's be careful and let, let me understand exactly what you're saying. So what comes first?
Well, I think what comes first is, um, Abby's, or I send, whatever, however that it works, that email.
Yep.
And then we, uh, wait to hear from the clients if they're, if they're agreeable and amenable to what we've discussed, and then at that point, say yes. Then I think we go and start, you know, we go after every grant we can get from the state.
Okay, great, I, I just wanna make sure I understood everything.
Same sort of. Yeah, Ken, Ken said he was gonna draw up a contract.
That's, yeah.
I don't know if that happens after we get feedback, or is that part of what we send in the initial?
I think that's after, that's what it seems like it would, yeah. So it's gonna take a little more time, Nick, but I think that it looks right now, I, it looks, I felt very positive about it, I think, I want, I think we all did.
Yeah.
That's great, very exciting. Yeah, thanks, guys, I appreciate that, that info, I think, uh, I think we're all kinda like sitting here on pins and needles, waiting for, uh, more information to come in, so, that's great. Um, so, I think at this point, can we, uh, get a motion to adjourn the subcommittee?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? Uh, all right, all in favor?
I.
I.
Yeah.
All opposed? All right, so the subcommittee is now officially closed. Um, so, thanks, guys, thanks, Mikes.
My pleasure.
But I can't do it, I haven't got a lot of emails, I can't find any other articles on it.
Okay, can I get a motion for the, uh, for the, uh, Conservation Commission to adjourn?
Oh, I'm making a motion to adjourn everything.
So.
All right.
Okay, any discuss, any discussion? All right, all in favor of, uh, adjourning the meeting? I.
Bye.
All right, guys, uh, so next May, uh, so the meeting in May is, uh, virtual. Uh, I look forward to being much healthier at that point.
Yeah, get better.
We'll go from there, it's a lot, the meeting's adjourned.
Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Right, I'm gonna send this.